Hello, everyone. We are here tonight for the City of Capella City Council meeting. It is Tuesday, January 12th, 2021. There is a quorum present, so we are going, I will call the meeting to order, and we will be moving directly into executive session. And we'll return in time for the work session. Thank you. Okay, we have adjourned from executive session, and we'll start the work session here momentarily. We're waiting for a few people to get here. Do you want this on this side?
No. I may reach around if I get this related.
One, two, three. Okay. Are we ready to start? People, I think. Oh, one. Okay. So, the time is 6:53, and we will be moving into work session. Item A is discussion regarding any agenda items. Does anybody have any agenda items that they are, have questions? Or have I already heard from Councilmember Long that he is recusing himself from two items? And just so you know, on the consent agenda, one of those will be item B, that he will be, so we'll look at the consent agenda minus that item. And then also, item 11, both Mr. Long and myself will be leaving the room for that item. And Mayor Pro Tem Hill will be stepping up. Any, virtually.
Absolutely.
Okay. So, any agenda items, questions? Okay. Item B, discussion regarding Mayor Pro Tem. Usually, the meeting directly after the option, we have this discussion about the Mayor Pro Tem for the upcoming year. It will be...
Four months.
Four months, thank you. Or I wasn't going to have to count. Thank you, four months. So, there's a couple of options that for us to consider. We can leave the Mayor Pro Tem in place and then have this discussion again after the next election. Or if you want to look at a new Mayor Pro Tem, we can do that as well. In order, I believe that it is Brianna next, if we decide to move forward that way. What we have done historically, we believe that anybody at this dais can act as Mayor Pro Tem, so we've just rotated it through. And I believe the next person is Brianna. And if two people come in on the same election cycle, it's the person that got more votes. Very scientific, very scientific. So, what is your pleasure? Yeah. We are in work session. Gary?
Yeah, I've never quite understood why we do it annually as opposed to May to May.
Or June to June, or...
June to June, yeah. Since we...
It's in the charter. That's why.
So, is this mandated? Okay. So, are you suggesting we do something from now till May and then change? Or you...
No, what would happen is, if, if, we would, it'll have to be on the next agenda, right? Yeah, either way, it'll have to be on the next agenda.
Good point, somebody.
So, if, I just wanted us to have the conversation. It's not on the agenda tonight. So, have the conversation, so next meeting, it can be on the agenda, and we can have the actual vote on it.
I would suggest we proceed as we always have, and then if we have to make another change in June, you make another change.
Anybody? To your mic. Sorry.
With the clarification that that means nominating Brianna to do that for the next four months. Is that, is that what you meant?
Nominating Brianna to do it for the next year.
Well, no, it's for the next, for this term. It's a term. It's not a year. It's, it's the next term.
Okay.
So, until the next election cycle.
The assumption would be you would then renominate her after that.
Yeah. Council will have this same discussion after the next election.
Right. I guess that's what I was trying to understand. So, because we just had an election, this would be for four months, and then we would have another conversation in June.
Yes.
On whether I would continue, or we would have another Mayor Pro Tem.
Yes.
So, yeah, if I were to be reelected, exactly. I'm...
There is one more caveat that we have. I am president, continue to be president of TML. And at this moment, it doesn't appear that I am going to be traveling as much as I had originally planned. So, the Mayor Pro Tem spot was going to have to be somebody that knew going into it that I was not going to be here, and that they would be relied upon a lot to run meetings and those types of things, although I would try hard not to do that. COVID has kind of changed all of that, and virtually, when I'm having meetings, I'm, I am going to be here. And I don't see that really changing until summer. I just don't. You look at most of the meetings going forward, that are conventions and those types of things, if you look out to February, March, and April, they are all virtual. So, that is something else that I had planned to bring up, but it isn't really much of an issue, I think, going forward, so. You know, we don't have to decide it tonight, but I wanted to make sure everybody was thinking about it. And if you wanted to decide it, you could. But if you have a comment that you'd like to share?
I'm open to whatever's the will of the council. Mark, I didn't know if you had any thoughts or ideas?
No, not really. I'm happy to stay on, but I'm willing to let you take over. It doesn't matter, whatever works out best.
Well, that was a resounding "we'll see." Okay. All right. So, it will be on the agenda next time? So, just be prepared for that, okay? Item C is discussion regarding update, I'm sorry, discussion and update regarding an asset management system. And we have Kent Collins with us.
Mayor, thank you, council. That should have read...
Need to turn up your volume just a little bit.
Can you hear me now?
Better.
Okay. I'll speak up. I'm rarely accused of being too quiet. So, it should have read, "update and discussion on an enterprise asset management system." And so, it's a good evening, Mayor, council. The, I want to go over the efforts that staff has gone through over the last probably year or so to implement an asset management system. It's quite a bit of history to this item, and I'm going to go through that. And at the end, I'll be requesting some direction to proceed with procurement of a new, a new asset, enterprise asset management system. And for the purposes of this discussion, when I talk about assets, I'm really primarily talking about our infrastructure, our facilities, and our fleet. And I know how much you love acronyms. I'm going to try to avoid using them with the one exception of, instead of saying enterprise asset management every time, I'm going to shorten that to EAM. So, when I say EAM, you know what I'm talking about. Next slide, please. So, as a way of background, this is not a new project. The city's been working towards a robust asset or infrastructure management system for a number of years, really going back decades to the creation of our GIS, our geographic information system. And we've spent a lot of resources on generating or collecting a lot of data around our assets. Again, including the GIS, the pavement condition assessments that you're familiar with, that Fugro does for us. We have facilities condition assessment. We have a work order system that we've procured through Tyler. And then the work we've done with Red Zone Robotics and UTA to do some condition assessment and video assessment of our sewer system. And really, the EAM is the system that will take all that data and help us use that data in a more comprehensive manner to make us smarter. And it really is a key to being a smart city. Definition of an EAM is the process of managing the life cycle of physical assets to maximize their use, save money, improve quality and efficiency, and safeguard health, safety, and environment. So, you hear it used in a lot of large industries. But in our, you know, in our, in what we do, really talking about our streets, our water, our sewer, our drainage systems, our facilities, and our fleet. It can be applied to parks. It can be applied in other areas, but that's really what we're talking about here. And you're familiar with Capella 2040. Our pillar seven is apply smart city approach to resource management. And really, in, in public works and our infrastructure, the EAM is key to being a smart city. And I will say, so EAM was originally part, well, we had a work order system as part of our original contract in, in the systems that we have for, to, to handle work orders, to handle our land development with planning and engineering, as well as our building permits. And that was an Intergov system that we went live with in 2016. And so, the, the plan was, so Tyler had planned to basically convert people from, from that system to their EAM product. And so, that was our plan. And we had that budgeted, and we were actually under contract and working towards, towards that implementation. Next slide, please. So, what are some of the benefits of the EAM? Or why, why do we need an EAM? I'm not going to read the whole slide. Y'all can read that. And, you know, in a nutshell, an EAM helps an organization with asset operation, maintenance, and replacement. So, when we look at our five- and 10-year plan, and we're going in and doing street reconstruction, and, you know, having to look, you know, does the water line need to be replaced as well? Or do we have other infrastructure out there that's deteriorating? And we know that because we have a lot of work orders out there. It's really connecting all those data sets and those data points to help us be smarter in how we work and how we plan with our assets. It'll help us be more efficient. It'll help us be more effective. And, and maybe, you know, most importantly, it can help us avoid costs of failures. You know, we're, a lot of you are familiar with the, the sewer failure that we had, that we were treating stormwater as part of our wastewater system. I would argue that an EAM, had it been in place with the data sets that we have today, we could have very likely avoided that failure, or at least have discovered and been able to track it down sooner to, to determine where, where it is most likely to be located. Next slide, please. So, I mentioned, this is not a new project. And so, how do we get here if it's not a new project? Why am I in front of you asking for a direction on a new system? So, we, we had budgeted, budgeted to, to move towards a Tyler EAM, and we started the implementation process. We got into just the discovery phase of our implementation. And what we discovered was that Tyler's EAM product was not where it needed to be for the city to proceed. One of the key pieces, well, two key pieces, is that we, we absolutely have to have GIS integration. GIS has to be the basis of this EAM, because we, we base all of our work orders, all of our planning on our GIS. We have a ton of data within, that's built into our GIS that we've developed over time. So, that's one of the requirements. And Tyler EAM did not have that, that basis. The other part was, we are looking for an EAM that will help us do predictive modeling, so we can look at our system and say, okay, where are the most likely places of a failure, whether it's water or sewer? And if it was to fail, is it a critical failure? Is it, is it something that's going to cause a lot of problems? Or is it kind of remote and something we maybe could handle or live with? So, we need a, we need an EAM that will help us do that. And Tyler's perform, the piece of their EAM was still under development. So, we, we made the decision that we were not going to proceed and could not proceed with the Tyler EAM. We do still have the existing Tyler work order system that was implemented in 2016, but it's no longer supported by Tyler, and they no longer develop it. So, basically, it is what it is. We're continuing to use it. But this EAM system will replace that and do everything else that we need it to. So, we did evaluate some other systems. We looked at City Works. We looked at Asset Works. And we've looked at Cartograph specifically. Those are big players in the EAM environment. And I, I've covered some of the requirements. I'm not going to go through all those again. But, you know, this will give us, it is GIS-centric. It can handle all of our asset types, everything I've talked about. It'll allow us to collect and collect field data in the field with handheld devices. It'll help us to manage that work and the work orders, again, in the field with handheld devices. Gives us that predictive capabilities. And it'll give us flexibility, because we do have data in different formats. And they can take and work with those data, data sets and, and bring them in. So, those are all things that, that we were absolutely requiring. And, I mean, I, I can't proceed without saying this. We have a lot of Tyler systems that have been implemented. We have our financial system. We have Intergov, where we're, that we use for our land development process. This has to integrate with Tyler. We have to be able to have those integrations. Next slide, please. So, the conclusion going through this is that, you know, as we evaluated all the systems, there is no perfect system, but Cartograph is the best to meet our needs. It's cost-effective, the most cost-effective of the systems that we've looked at as well. They have a proven track record in other cities. It can handle all the, all the data types, gives us the flexibility. They have demonstrated the ability to integrate with Tyler in other cities. Cartograph is fully native to GIS. So, their, their system is built around GIS, not just integrated with GIS. And it gives us that, that ability to use our robust data sets as we go forward. Next system, or next, next slide, please. So, we talk a lot about procurement of these systems. You know, when we looked at Cartograph, we, we talked to them, and they do have a cooperative purchase, purchasing option. The more we talked about it, we thought it would be best to actually step back and put it out on the street. A lot of times, these softwares will have third-party integrators, third-party implementers, people that can actually sell you the software as well. So, we put it out on the street, went through a bid process. In this case, the total project cost of Cartograph, where we sit right now, is $620,000. That's for the software, all the integrations, the project management support. And we, where, where we are is, it is a 24-month implementation. So, as I mentioned, in this case, do nothing is not an option, because the work order system we have right now is no longer being developed or supported by Tyler. Now, we have looked at funding sources, because when you look at the assets that will go into and be managed through the EAM, it's really everything that, that we have. It's drainage, it's water, it's sewer, it's, it's, it's our streets and our traffic. So, we would propose to share the cost of the EAM across our, our, our funding sources through the DUD, the Water Sewer, and the General Fund. And I, you know, funding is available, as I mentioned. We do not have it in this year's budget. It's not approved in the budget in the current fiscal year. So, if it's approved, what we would do, I mean, you'd be familiar with this, is we would come back, the funding source would be undesignated fund balance. And then, that would be, we would amend the budget during a future budget amendment to include those, those expenditures. You know, I talked about some of the, you know, the big example of, of the failure underneath near Denton Tap, where we were spending about $1 million a year for a couple of years treating what was stormwater that was infiltrating into our, our, our sanitary sewer system. You know, and I'm not, I'm not saying that the EAM is going to make us 100% on, you know, we're not going to have failures. But we have a lot of data that is valuable, and the EAM will help us to use that data and to try to help us avoid those kinds of failures. And it will make us much more efficient on a day-to-day basis as we go forward. Next slide, please. So, tonight, we're requesting some direction and feedback. And if we're directed to proceed with implementation, we're going to finalize negotiations with Cartograph. Part of that discussion is going to be around that, the schedule, the 24-month implementation. Because if we, if we can find a way to shave some time off of that, that will save some money off of that contract. And really, until we have those conversations, those next, you know, over the next couple of weeks, I don't know that we can shave that time off, but I'm hopeful that we can come back with something less than a 24-month contract for implementation. So, we would have that follow-on discussion on the 26th and present the, the contract for consideration of award. Next slide. With that, I would be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Kent. Questions, comments? Councilmember Wes? We're in work session. We're casual.
I'm going to bite my tongue. Kent, I forgot my question. You made a comment that you, that the current work order system is not being supported. What is its true lifetime or end-of-life before it's absolutely not usable anymore?
Yeah, I actually don't have a hard answer on that. But I can tell you that I think we got one of the last licenses for that particular product that Tyler sold. And, you know, when we have something that goes wrong, they just don't have a team that is dedicated to supporting that project or that product currently.
Understand that, but they're not pulling the plug on it, so to speak.
It's, it's, no, I mean, it, it functions now, but I would say it's maybe a year or two, you know? So, we're, by the time we have something implemented, it, I think it would have, have, we would be on four years of it essentially not being developed further.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Collins, a couple of things, and maybe you covered this, and I just didn't follow. We didn't budget for this last, this time last year. Help me understand, did we not see this coming? Or is there new information from Tyler that's, that's caused us to want to move now?
Yes. So, we finished discovery, I guess, early last, late, early last year. And, yeah, I don't really have an explanation for not submitting something to get in the budget other than, we really did not know where we were going to be in terms of a budget need as we went forward to try to find something outside the Tyler universe. So, once we made that decision, we started looking at other products. And, you know, it took some time. I think, you know, COVID impacted our ability to get quick information and talk to all the vendors. Probably should have, have had a placeholder, at least a number in the budget, but, yeah.
I understand. I'm not being critical. I'm just trying to understand kind of how we're here and how we can avoid it. I guess my other question is, we've spent a lot of money with Tyler through the years. I guess four years isn't a lot of ti, long time in, in software development, but do they not have any liability? I, I guess, it sounds like if we got one of the last licenses, we understood that the product was going to be obsolete. Does Tyler not have any liability to us?
I think they've, they delivered to us what they were under contract to deliver. The P, the, the product is public maintenance management that we use for our work order system. They delivered that. They delivered that, we got it implemented. And you know, they, they moved. That was a product that they purchased when they bought a different company or an outside company. And so they, at that point, by the time we got it implemented, they were starting to migrate people over to their EAM product, which they call Tyler EAM. And, and we, in, in early discussions, we were assured that Tyler EAM would do everything we needed, needed it to, including the predictive analysis that, that's so important to us and the G I S integration. And it was only through some pretty extensive discovery that we determined that was, that was not the case, that they were still developing that product to do the things that, that we, that we were told it could do. And they, you know, the, the budget that was in that contract, there were other uses for that budget within our contract with Tyler. So it was, you know, it was basically used for payroll, getting that up and running. So that, you know, that, it's not like it, they didn't give us use of that part of the contract or those dollars. But yeah.
I guess my last comment would be with as much as we spent with them. And if, if they let us to believe their EAM would be the answer and it wasn't, and now we're having to spend $640,000 to buy another product, I would hope that we're expressing to them that we're, we're less than pleased with that outcome. And that hopefully as we go forward with them with other products, they will help, help us to try to overcome that. Thanks.
Yes, sir. I mean, I can tell you, I was in, I've been in several meetings with Tyler on that topic. They're fully aware of our lack of enthusiasm in, in the fact that Tyler EAM did not do what they said it would.
Any other questions or comments? John?
Kent, if I heard you correctly, you said that right now the budget, the amount sits at 620,000. Do we have a number that it could go up in terms of bottom out?
No, the, that, that's the kind of the highest, the not to exceed amount. We're, we're going to talk to them and see if we can't shorten the implementation timeframe, which would bring that number down. I can't guarantee that that's something that we can do because we need to have those conversations with Cartograph and, and with internal staff, with our ES staff as well as our project management contractor. So we're going to have those conversations and see if we can come back with something that's less. But where I sit right now, that's the number, that's the number that we have for this project.
And with that, moving forward, is there anything in terms of that's going to cost us after service wise, moving forward?
Say that, say that again.
If we were to go ahead and, you know, purchase this, right? Moving forward, is it going to cost us anymore moving forward every year? Is there additional cost every year or anything to that effect?
Yes, there's a, there's an annual license. This is a software as a service model, this, this particular. So it'll be hosted offsite, hosted by Cartograph. And it's $60,000 per year as we go forward for the licenses.
That's all I had. Thank you.
Okay, so any other questions? He's looking for direction to move forward. Is everybody good with that? Yep. Good is a relative term is what I heard here. But yes, obviously this is something that we need to continue to, to be that smart city and be able to predict and hopefully nip some of this stuff in the bud. So you have nodding heads to continue your quest.
Thank you very much.
Item D, we have six minutes left. Short term rentals update from Louis. Is he on?
Yes, ma'am.
Hey, how are you doing?
Good. How are you, ma'am?
Very good. Go right ahead.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The reason I'm here today is I want to give you an update about our short term rental program and propose few changes going forward. There's three things that I like to keep in mind as I go through this presentation. That our current ordinance will expire on January 31st of this month. If the council agrees with the proposed changes, the updated ordinance will be brought back to City Council for adoption on January 26th. Next slide, I'm sorry. Next slide, next slide. If the council agrees on the proposed changes of the updated ordinance, the updated ordinance will be brought back to City Council for adoption the, the second meeting of this month. And the updated ordinance will be good only for one year. The reason we keep one year because we want to continue to improve this ordinance till we find something that everybody is comfortable with. Next slide, please. I'm going to give you a little bit history about this ordinance. In 2018, we started to get some requests from our residents expressing their desire to rent their homes for a period shorter than 30 days. At the same time, we started to hear other concerns from other residents regarding short term rental. So we came to council in 2018 and we asked the council three questions. What would you like us to do about short term rental? Do you want, do you want like, do you like us to prohibit it? Regulate it or just leave it unregulated? Council expressed their desire that we need to regulate short term rental. Next slide. So we went back and in May 2018, we presented the council with the proposed solutions to concerns expressed by our residents. Next slide. And in 2018, we, in June 2018, we adopted the first, City of, City of Capital adopted the first short term rental ordinance, the city that provided the balance between the desires of the homeowner to render homes and at the same time to protect the neighboring properties. What I'm going to present to you today, it's improvement on our existing ordinance that we believe is going to make it better for, for everyone. Next slide, please. So I'm going to give you a little bit just status of our short term rental. Right now we have 11 short term rental properties in Capel. We got 10 complaints in the last 12 months. We collected 11,000, a little bit over $11,000 in 2019 and $11,000 in 2020. Next slide, please. So the big three improvements that we are offering tonight is our enforcement process, registration requirement and neighborhood outreach. Next slide, please. So our typical enforcement process goes like this. Somebody complained about short term rental. We open a case, we investigate, we contact the property owner and 99 out of 100% we get compliance. If we don't get compliance, we go to second tier of enforcement. We send a courtesy notice. We wait seven days, we send another final notice. And then if they don't comply, we issue a citation. The issue that we found out the last two years, that a lot of time when we reach step number four, when we contact the property owner, they comply. So if they violated the same ordinance over and over and over, but they keep correcting the violation, we never went to the second tier, which the enforcement is giving them a citation. So we improved this process now. Next slide, please. So now if we got the same, we've got a violation, a verified violation about an address, we got four violation within 12 month period, we have the right to revoke their permit or to deny their, their renewal process. So it could look like this. First time they failed to renew their permit. That's one violation of the ordinance. Second time they have a party, you have loud noise. The police goes out there, verify the complaint and the second violation. It could be too many cars in, at the house. That's the third violation. We investigate, it's a third violation. It could be a, a party in the front line, front lawn. The police get called, verify the, verify the complaint. That's a fourth violation. So what we do in this process, if they get four verified violations at the same address, we could revoke their permit. This is the city's right to revoke their permit. However, they have the right to appeal the process. Second slide, please. Next slide. So if they, if they appeal the process, they have the right to file an appeal with the Board of Adjustment. The Board of Adjustment will conduct a hearing and they'll tell us if they deny or appeal their, deny or approve their appeal. If the Board of Adjustment denied their appeal, they have to wait six months before they have the right to apply again. And all decisions at the Board of Adjustment under this article deemed final. And, and what, what we're going to do with this even to improve a little bit better, every time somebody comes through the registration process, we are going to flag the house as a short term rental. So when the police department go out there, they need to know, they need to contact us to let us know that, hey, there is a verified complaint about that address. So we could collect those four violations and get to the point where we could revoke their permit if needed. Next slide, please. So that's the enforcement process. We, we improve the registration process as well. Next slide, please. As I, I mentioned before, one of the biggest improvement we did, we are working closely with the police department to make sure we let them know about those houses around the city that do in short term rental. So anytime they have a call about an address, they can call us and let us know that this Louis, there's something in that house, there's a verified complaint, keep your eye on it. So we could, we could work together to, to, to maintain the integrity of our city. So in original ordinance, we only ask for six things. We ask for property owner information, prove a primary residence, local contact information from one to six. We improving the registration process by asking them to do specifically number seven. Submit complete list of all rental advertised on all hosting sites. Because the foundation of our ordinance is to provide homeowners ability to use their house for short term rental, we require them to be, the rentals to be the primary residence of that homeowner. So we want to know, is this a business for him or her? So we could keep close attention on the house as well. If they have a property management, we need to know that information as well. And when they come through the process, we would literally have an agreement with them that tells them, if you don't comply with the, all the rules here, we could deny or revoke your permit. And that's how we believe we improve the registration process. Next slide, please. Now, the neighborhood outreach, what did we do to improve that aspect of it? Next slide, please. Originally, the original ordinance, we notified people within 100 feet of that address. We increased that to say 200 feet, which increased seven homes around any short term rentals, an average seven homes. So we believe what we do, we send them a letter, give them information about how to complain to us in case there is a violation at that, that home. If they call us or the police, we give them a 24 hour hotline and a link on our website that allows them to, to complain about any address non honestly, without anybody knowing about it and for us to know about it. And we contacted the police department to, to do the investigation if it's overnight. And that's how we improve the neighborhood outreach. Next slide, please. So we did not change the foundation of our main, main ordinance, which is you have to be the primary residence. No more than two adult bare bedroom, maximum occupant, September house, one car bare bedroom. And any advertisement and all, all contracts must contain language specified that allow maximum number of occupants and maximum number of vehicles. So we improved the existing ordinance without impacting the original ordinance. And we believe when we do all these three things, our enforcement process, registration requirements, improvement, the neighborhood outreach, we are able to address most of the issues that existed originally with the issues that we had the last two years. So we believe this is a great ordinance till this point. We plan to renew the ordinance every year. So we come back, if we approve it next, next meeting, we'll come back the next year. We'll talk about other improvements and we will keep improving this. The council feels and staff feels that this is a very good ordinance that protects everybody in the city, the homeowners and as well the neighboring properties. And I'll take any questions. Sorry, I did it very quick, but I'll take any questions.
Thank you. Any questions, comments? Gary?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Good presentation. This is really turned out better than I think a lot of us were concerned it could turn out a few years ago when we implemented the ordinance. I guess my question is item seven on, on your new requirements that you're adding, can you pull that back up?
Right there. Thank you, Julian.
Yeah, so my understanding is in order to have a rental, short term rental in Capel, it has to be your primary residence, correct?
Yes, sir.
So I guess I'm a little confused by submit a complete list of all rentals advertised on hosting sites. Would that be outside of Capel as well?
Yes, sir. That, that could be outside of Capel, could be in Austin. It allows us, it gives us insights on, on what the homeowner is doing. If this is a business that he's using or he actually lives there.
So we're actually here trying to determine that this isn't their primary resident and they're in violation of the ordinance?
Yes, sir.
What we're trying to, to, to look at here is whether people are buying homes. I, I want to say everyone is truthful, but we know they're not. And by requiring this additional information, one, we give them the opportunity to tell us the truth. And two, the opportunity to disclose to us whether or not they have other homes in the areas. Because we do have a number of homeowners in the area that have more than one home and that showing up on these lists. And so our suspicion is that this is a business and they're buying these properties for the sole purpose of using them for short term rentals. Where our real intent is to assist our current owner occupant as a source of income to keep their home. That was one of the things that was your concern. So if these homes are being purchased for the sole purpose of conducting short term rental, that's a business. That's not a home occupation. That's a business. So now we've got a business in a residential district and that's a real concern for us. So we're trying to get the homeowners to give us this information, require it so that there's full disclosure by whoever the permit T is and give us another tool that if they've been untruthful to us in the permitting process, it gives us the grounds to revoke their permit.
And, and I appreciate that explanation. That's, I'm trying to balance the, you know, what's our need for the information versus an individual's right to, to somewhat privacy and, and why, why should they have to provide that information? So that's helpful to understand that, that we're really just validating that this is in fact their residence and it's not a business.
Yes, sir.
Very good. Thank you.
Wes?
Thank you, Karen. So Barbara, Louis, I'm not sure which one. If I recall from previous presentations, the most single difficult thing to determine was whether this was their primary residence. And we've actually had some questions. So do we think that this will take care?
It's a, it's a tool. You can't live in six places at the same time. And so what we're finding is we have homeowners, how can I say, homestead exemptions for two homes, one in Irving, one in Capel. A little concerning because you only have one homestead.
So this will help that.
So it'll help that in the factor advertising and give us another window to check that information to validate that it is their primary residence.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bob.
Any other questions? Great job. I am, I'm sure that our homeowners who are neighbors will be thankful for the additional scrutiny. And I appreciate your work on this. Thanks.
Thank you.
We have one item left. How long is the presentation or can we, should we do it after? It's 7:38. So we are going to, sorry, John Elias, you're out there. We're going to ask you to come back after the, the regular meeting. So we will adjourn work session at 7:39. And then we will move into the regular session shortly. Give us about five minutes. Okay, I think we're back. Do we have Mayor Pro Tem Hill with us virtually? Well, let's go ahead and get started. The time is 7:44 and we will be moving into regular session tonight. Item four is the invocation and that will be given by Councilmember Wes Mays. And then we will do the pledge of allegiance. So those of us here present, please remain standing. Councilmember Mays?
Let us pray. Loving and most merciful God, we ask you to bless this country, this state, and our city. Those that we call or pledge our allegiance to, we ask that you lead us into this new year empowered by the knowledge that the diseases that have claimed our loved ones, our friends, and our associates will soon be a thing of the past. Let us not forget, it is through your grace that we solely exist to do your will. As we are looking forward to a new year, to one with a new beginning and a fresh start, we come to you full of anxiety about what has happened over the past week and what may happen in the coming days and weeks. Shower us with the peace that Jesus promised to his disciples and make us into steady pillars for those around us. In this time of uncertainty, wake us up to remember that we are not alone. We pray that you guide the citizens of this country as a new leader is sworn into office. We ask that you guide those citizens and ourselves of this country to protest through peaceful and legal means and ask that those elected officials at the federal, state, and city governments to follow the way that your son, Jesus Christ, lived his life. As we look to you, O God, for reassurance and guidance, inspire each of us to walk in the path of the Holy Spirit. We pray for the agenda set before us today. Please give us that ability to make decisions that please you and what would benefit those who live and work in and around our beloved city of Capel. It is in your most blessed name that I pray.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, thank you very much. Now we will be moving to item six as it is required. The item is consider approval of accepting the resignation of John Jun from the Board of Adjustments. If you are a member of council, you are not able to serve on any boards and commissions. And he has given us his resignation, so it is up to this council to accept that resignation. Councilmember Roden.
Thank you, Mayor. Move to approve item six.
Is second by Councilmember Long. All in favor?
Long, Hina Smith, Mays, Roden, Jun, Matthew, Hill in favor, none opposed, motion carries.
Okay. You didn't know that that was going to be the first thing you voted on, huh? It's okay if you don't want to. You're welcome to come closer if you want to take pictures. Why don't we step over here so this isn't in the way? Okay? All right, raise your right hand. Repeat after me. I state your name.
I, John Jun.
Do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute
That I will faithfully execute.
The duties of the office
The duties of the office.
City Council Place Five
City Council Place Five.
Of the city of Capel
Of the city of Capel.
State of Texas
State of Texas.
And will
And will.
To the best of my ability
To the best of my ability.
Preserve, protect, and defend
Preserve, protect, and defend.
The Constitution and laws
The Constitution and laws.
Of the United States
Of the United States.
And of this state
And of this state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
This is hard. Congratulations.
Thank you so much, thank you. Do I get to take a picture with him?
Take a quick picture, but we have business to be done. I wanted to move the whole thing over here. When I saw him on Facebook riding the bike, oh my gosh. Got to be careful, you're in the picture. Great to see you, Luke. Okay, now we will move to item eight, citizens' appearance. Do we have anyone who has signed up for citizens' appearance?
No, ma'am.
And no emails?
No, ma'am.
No nothing? Okay, thank you. So item nine, council, please consider approval of a proclamation naming January 12th, 2021 as Kenny Marchant Day in the city of Capel and authorize the mayor to sign. Please consider this proclamation. Whereas Kenny Marchant began his political career as a member of the City Council of Carrollton, beginning in 2000, I'm sorry, in 1980, and then served as mayor for the city of Carrollton from 2084 to 2000, oh, golly, 1984, I'm, it's been a while, 1984 and to 1987. Whereas Kenny was elected to the Texas House of Representatives in 1987 and served until 2004. Whereas Kenny Marchant served as a U.S. Representative of Texas for the 24th Congressional District from 2005 to 2021. And whereas the Texas 24th Congressional District is located in the northern portion of the state and includes portions of Tarrant County, Denton County, and Dallas Counties and therefore the city of Capel. Whereas Kenny has been a dedicated and loyal to his responsibilities, to his constituents of the 24th District. Whereas Kenny served on many committees during his eight terms as a U.S. Representative, such as the Committee on Ethics, Joint Economic Committee, Committee of Ways and Means, Committee of Education and Workforce, and as well as various other subcommittees. Whereas Kenny Marchant, a Capel citizen, deserves recognition, gratitude, and thanks for his service to the citizens of the state of Texas, the citizens of the 24th Congressional District, and to the citizens of Capel. Now therefore, I, Karen Hunt, the mayor of the city of Capel, do hereby proclaim Tuesday, January 12th, 2021, as Kenny Marchant Appreciation Day. In witness thereof, I have set my hand and caused the seal of the city of Capel to be affixed this 20, or this 12th day of January 2021. Council. Councilmember Matthew? Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve agenda item nine, consider the approval of a proclamation naming January 12th, 2021 as Kenny Merchant Day and authorizing the mayor to sign.
Second by Councilmember Hina Hosa Smith. All in favor?
Long, Hina Smith, Mays, Roden, Jun, Matthew, Hill in favor, none opposed, motion carries.
Very much. I'm going to attempt to give this to him personally, though he may be hard to find. But I'm very appreciative of him. He's been a great help to me in these last several years. Okay, so item 10 is a consent agenda. These items are routine in nature and are generally enacted in one motion. These items have been previously approved through budget or passed council action. Any item may be pulled to be considered separately. Full descriptions have been available on the screen. We will be pulling item B at this time as there is a, Mr. Long has indicated a conflict of interest. So I'm asking the council to look at items A and items C through G. Are there any questions or comments regarding these items? Councilmember Mays?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve consent agenda items A and C through G.
Is there a second? Councilmember Roden? All in favor?
Long, Hina Smith, Mays, Roden, Jun, Matthew, Hill in favor, none opposed, motion carries.
Thank you. Mr. Long, would you like to leave the room? Item B is on the, again, on the consent agenda. Are there any questions or comments regarding item B? Hearing none. Councilmember Mays?
Thank you, Mayor. Move to approve consent agenda item B.
Is there a second? Councilmember, oh, Mayor Pro Tem Hill? All in favor?
Hina Hosa Smith, Mays, Roden, Jun, Matthew, Hill in favor, none opposed, motion carries.
Thank you very much. And we are on item 11 and I'm going to turn this over to Mayor Pro Tem Hill.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number 11 is a public hearing, so I'd like to formally open the public hearing. This is to consider approval of PD 250 R 21 R-H Old Town Edition Lot 1 R2, Block C, zoning change request from PD 250 R 21-H Planned Development Dash 250 Dash Revision 21 Dash Historic to PD 250 R 21 R-H Planned Development Dash 250 Revision 21 Dash Revised Dash Historic to allow the coffee shop slash retail to remain on the first floor and to convert one of the residential units, which is apartment 202, into an office space on the second floor on 0.24 acres of property located at 462 Houston Street at the request of Christian Himberger, the property owner. And we have Mr. Steer here to do the presentation.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem and council. Good evening. As mentioned, this is located on the northeast corner of Main Street and Houston Street. In October 2015, council approved a 7,800 square foot first-floor coffee house with residential above for the subject property. Currently, there are two residential units on the second floor and the applicant's requesting to allow the coffee shop and retail to remain on the first floor and then convert one of the residential units into a speculative professional office on the second floor. Next slide, please. The area of the space to be converted outlined in blue is 2,059 square feet. Preliminary plans include three private offices, one multi-desk shared office, one common space, including a utility room, kitchen, community table, and soft seating area. It's estimated that this will allow for a staff of approximately 10 employees. Next slide. A parking analysis was done to ensure that the conversion of this space to professional office was feasible. The use amendment will result in a change of required parking from 2.5 for the residential use to seven parking spaces for the professional office use. That's calculated at one parking space per 300 square feet. Next slide, please. The applicant amended and updated the study for the Main Street area that was previously done for the Arts Center. Overall, there's 894 required spaces for the various uses and 1,015 parking spaces being provided for the master-planned area. And this does not include the 40 parking spaces along Burnett Street. Next slide, please. We sent out 18 notices to surrounding property owners within 200 feet and 178 courtesy notices. We received two courtesy phone calls in support of the request. Next slide. The Planning and Zoning Commission unanimously recommended approval of this request, subject to two conditions. One, this will be subject to a detailed building permit review upon permit submittal. And two, this is subject to the egress provisions for non-residential buildings under the 2015 IBC. And once reclassified, the space cannot be used as a dwelling. And this concludes my presentation. I'll be happy to answer any questions. The applicant is online as well. And as a reminder, this is a public hearing. Thank you.
Any questions from council? Mr. Councilman Roden?
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Mr. Steer, I guess first, I just, this applicant has been a great corporate citizen, has done a really good job there in Old Town of providing a great meeting place for people and a good product. And so I support them trying to adjust their business model in these tough times. I guess my only question for you, Mr. Steer, I know we've got plenty of parking in Old Town, we've kind of talked that to death. The challenge is a lot of those businesses have head-in parking right near, in front of their business that I think needs to be available for their customers by adding, you said seven based on the square footages, but the applicant had said there could be as many as 10 individuals in that office space. as many as 10 individuals in that office space. Is there concern with taking up the immediate parking around those other businesses such that they can never park in front of their business? Or, I mean, how do we address that?
You know, we really hadn't considered that, but if you'd like, you could put a condition on the case that, you know, limits where the employees could park. Possibly there is the parking lot behind the Frost Cup Cakery, or there's Burnett Street parking. You could, you know, suggest that they park in certain areas, the employees. I'm sure that they're going to try and free up the parking in front of their business for other customers. So.
I hate to put some kind of regulation in place that's virtually impossible for the city to enforce, but I guess since the applicant is listening in, I would ask that that be the case, that their regular daily staff try to park over behind the cupcakery when they're going to be there all day and free up that other retail space.
This is Christian Hemberger, the applicant. Absolutely. So right now, as it is, we have all of our staff parking on the Burnett Street. And we could absolutely inform and steer any upstairs tenants to be there as well.
Mayor and counsel, you could also designate those areas immediately. Front is customer parking only for retail. And then at least have it marked and delineated for that head-end parking if you desire to do so. You could add that condition.
Would that be something that those businesses would need to ask us to do? Mike, you had something?
If you recall, we've kind of gone through this before, and appreciating the city attorney's suggestion, we came up with a, if you want to call it, a temporary solution that has signage out there that talks about timeframe for parking, but it is in designated locations. It's not for all those parking spaces. So enforcement would be a challenge.
Again, I don't want to set up a scenario where we're taking resources from other things trying to enforce it, but I appreciate the applicant's agreement to talk to whoever leases that space about trying to make sure those spaces are left free. Thank you.
Any other questions from council members? I do have a question for you, Mr. Steer, more maybe even for the property owner. How are you handling accessibility to the second floor? I don't want you to get down the road and find out you've got to put in a $30,000 elevator and you're not expecting it.
Counselmember, now, we did analyze that, the need for an elevator, and we determined it was not necessary for the retrofit.
As long as you've had someone to look into that, that's none of my business. I just didn't want there to be a little booby trap down the road.
Right. That was our first question, right out of the bat.
All right. Any other council members? Yes, Councilmember Roden?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I move to close the public hearing and approve Item 11.
Second by Councilmember Brianna Hino Hosa.
And that was with conditions?
With conditions. Okay. And we had a second about Councilmember Brianna Hino Hosa. Okay. All in favor?
Hina Hosa Smith, Mase Roden, John Matthew Hill in favor. None opposed, the motion carries.
Thank you. And Mayor, you ready to come back?
So now we are moving to Item 12. So I will open the public hearing. And Mary Perone Boswell is here, and I'm going to let her read it into the record.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Mayor, counsel. Item 12 is a public hearing. It's Consider Approval of PD-157 R8-C Valley Ranch Plaza, a zoning change request from PD-157 R7-C to PD-157 R8-C to allow for the subdivision of the property into three lots for the sale of the different lots/businesses on approximately 4.6 acres of the property located at the southwest corner of East Beltline Road and South MacArthur Boulevard at the request of BLMA Limited and Phase II BLMA Limited. So again, this is an existing retail center located at the southwest corner of Beltline Road and MacArthur Boulevard. It was constructed somewhere around 1996 to 1999. So there are three existing businesses on the site. Next slide, please. So the purpose of this request is to allow for the subdivision of the property into three lots for the potential sale of the different lots. This request is accompanied by a replat, which will create the three separate lots. So what you're looking at here is the proposed three different lots. So the site is currently home to three buildings. A McDonald's occupies the building at the southwest corner of Beltline Road and MacArthur. To the west of McDonald's, so that's on Lot 2. To the west of McDonald's, on proposed Lot 1, is another building also fronting on Beltline Road. It's approximately 8,000 square foot in size. The third building, identified as Lot 3 on the exhibit, is the building located directly south of the first two, and it fronts onto MacArthur Boulevard. It's the largest of the three buildings at approximately 19,366 square feet. So essentially, this request, there are no proposed changes to the exterior of the buildings. This is truly just trying to separate this one big lot into three separate lots. There are some PD conditions being requested due to the existing nature of the buildings on the site and the creation of lot lines where none existed previously. So one of them is, with the addition of lot lines and the way the ordinance is written and setback requirements, what is being requested is that the setbacks be as shown on the site plan. One of the other conditions that arises is for parking. So while there are a significant amount of parking spaces on this site as a whole, once you start chopping it up into the three different lots, Lot 1, based on the types of uses proposed for that lot, is short about two to three spaces. Lot 3, on the other hand, has about 30 extra spaces. So the ordinance does allow for a parking agreement to take place if there's, sorry, for shared parking to take place if there's a parking agreement. So staff has been working with the applicant and the city attorney to look at a parking agreement for between Lots 1 and 3. In addition, currently Lot 1 and 3 also share a dumpster. And so with the separation of the three lots, a dumpster agreement would also be required. And we have also been looking into a dumpster agreement between Lot 1 and Lot 3. So staff is not opposed to those PD request conditions. Next slide, please. So as I mentioned, in reviewing the site, the most significant revision to the existing centers is the addition of more trees to the three proposed lot sites. One, another PD request is to allow for the internal perimeter landscape locations to be as shown on the plan, which was originally approved. Again, the center is existing. There are no plans to change the buildings. The first two lots, so Lots 1 and 2, either meet or exceed the overall landscaping area calculations. The third lot is deficient by today's standards. However, they are proposing to add a significant amount of trees onto the overall site and an additional 10 trees onto Lot 3. Next slide, please. There you can see all the trees that they're proposing to add. So staff is in favor as well to this PD condition. Next slide. Now, we did send out letters to property owners within 200 and 800 feet. We did receive one phone call from an adjacent commercial property owner, essentially just asking what was going on and how it would impact their property. Next slide. So the Planning and Zoning Commission did recommend approval of the request, subject to the following conditions being met. One, that a replat for this site must be filed. Two, to allow for the setbacks for Lot 3-A, Lot 3 Block A to be as shown on the plan. Three, to allow the landscaping to be as shown on the plan. And four, to require a parking and dumpster agreement between Lots 1 and 3 be filed at the county and listed on the plan and site plan. That is the end of my presentation. Though for questions, and the property owners also here this evening.
This is a public hearing. Does the property owner have anything that they would like to add?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you. Are there anyone who has signed up?
No, ma'am.
No one has signed up to speak on this agenda item, so I will turn it over to council members. Do you have any comments or questions? Counselmember Mase?
Thank you, Mayor. Ms. Boswell, what would keep, and I guess I'm kind of looking at Properties 1 and 2, going down the road into the future, what would require them to keep the fire lanes and access lanes and parking consistent so that one doesn't interfere with the other's enterprise?
Sure. So with the proposed replat, we have added the fire lanes to make sure that they are consistent and flow between the different sites, so they are shown. And as well, we've added mutual access easements so that the drives, you can drive through each property. So essentially, when you go there, you wouldn't know any different from today to tomorrow that anything has changed.
Thank you very much.
Mayor Protem Hill?
Yeah, I do have a question. I assume that there's probably water lines, storm sewer, and sewer lines crossing the property. I guess those would be all in easements that are dedicated to.
They're already shown in easements, and, you know, they would be responsible for maintaining that. It's all internal.
Okay, so they couldn't, for some reason, restrict access to it, to a joining property?
Yeah, and our engineering department has reviewed this and are satisfied with what's being shown.
Good deal. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion. Counselmember Mase?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to close the public hearing and approve Item Number 12 with amendments, conditions.
Is there a second? Mayor Protem Hill? I'm getting that tonight. Did you hear that? I'm getting that tonight. All in favor?
Long, Hina Hosa Smith, Mase Roden, John Matthew Hill in favor. None opposed, the motion carries.
Thank you very much. Okay, now we are also moving to Item 13. It is also a public hearing, and this is Consider Approval of PD-260R3-R Trinity River Kayak Zoning Change Request from PD-260R2-R to PD-260R3-R to amend the site plan to allow for the demolition of an existing storage building and construction of a new structure containing a garage, an enclosed storage area, and a covered pavilion on 1.9 acres located at 1601 East Sandy Lake Road at the request of Erin Duncan on behalf of Jeff Varnell, Varnell Holdings LLC. And Ms. Mary, are you ready to continue?
Yes, ma'am. So Item 13, the site is located at 1601 East Sandy Lake Road at the city limit line. Next slide, please. So last year, if you recall, this site was before you and was approved to have a live work use on it. So the site is home to Trinity River Kayak. The owner is proposing to do some improvements on the site, which include the demolition of an old garage, which is identified in yellow, and replacing it with a new structure. The new structure will include a garage, an additional enclosed storage space, and a covered patio area. Next slide. Essentially, that garage will come down. This site has, that garage is located at the end of the paved fire lane, driveway, turnaround, and in front of the parking lot for the kayak business. A demolition permit will be required to remove the building. Next. The proposed new garage will be in the same general area and accessed from the same paved fire lane slash driveway. The new building will be approximately 2,500 square feet and 100 feet wide. So as you can see on the illustration here, it's oriented east to west, minimizing the building's visibility from the adjacent residential properties on the west. And it does not interfere with the parking spaces just south of it. If you've ever been out here or stand on Sandy Lake there and look into the site, the site does slope down from Sandy Lake south into the site. Next slide, please. So this is just a view from internal to the site. So that building on your left is the existing garage, which is proposed to be demolished. If you look just past that building, that's the western property line, and you can see that there's a six-to-eight-foot retaining wall. And on top of that retaining wall, there's another six-to-eight-foot wood screening fence. So that site, you know, you can tell it's lower than the residential adjacent to it. Next slide. So in terms of landscaping, there is no proposed new landscaping. This site was updated with landscaping last year, or during the 2019, with the previous request. The building was placed so as not to disturb the recently planted trees adjacent to the parking area. Next slide. So in terms of the actual building, a quarter of that building will be the garage. The next quarter of it will be a storage room. So we're going from west to east, or left to right. And then the other half of the building will be a covered patio area. So it'll be open, but it will be covered. In terms of materials for the building, it'll have a brown metal roof, and it'll have a hunter green powder-coated pearlin bearing rib, I hope I'm saying that correctly, PBR panel building. Next slide. So again, we did send out letters to within 200 and 800 feet. Did get one phone call, and that's identified with the red on the map here. They were opposed to the new building. They thought it would be a little bit too tall, and that they would be able to see it from the backyard. and that they would be able to see it from the backyard. Uh, but we also did receive two um, an email and a letter uh, in favor of the, of the request and that's identified by the um, green dots on the map. Next slide please. So the Planning and Zoning Commission did recommend approval of PD 260 R3 dash R uh, Trinity River Kayak subject to the following conditions. One, that there be additional, there may be additional comments uh, at the time of building permit review. Two, that a demolition permit would be required to remove the existing structure. And uh, three, that any future structure will require a PD amendment. Uh, that is the end of my presentation and I believe the um, applicants are here as well to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Um, does the um, I guess Mr. Duncan, do you have any comments to add?
Uh, yeah, we'll keep it brief. Uh, thank you, Mayor and Council. Really what we're here for, so you know, this year actually Jeff's business had been closed for a couple of years with all the flooding, but I guess one of the benefits this year was that this kayaking rental was actually a, I guess a quarantine uh, amenity. So Jeff's business was uh, extremely busy this summer. And so if you've been out there, you'll know there, the process. You, you go, you run a kayak, you launch on the hour and uh, there's just a little hut out there where an employee uh, checks people in and you, and you uh, kinda wait there. And so there's no uh, reprieve from the, the shade or any shelter or seating area uh, while you're waiting to rent. And so what Jeff wanted to do was, the old garage is, is uh, pretty old and rundown and, and so he wanted to uh, demo the garage, add another garage, and he thought, well, he does that, let's just make this one structure and add um, a covered meeting area so that when people are waiting to rent or waiting to uh, get on the kayaks, there's, there's a shov, a covered area, give them shelter from the heat and all that. Uh, but also the other thing Jeff realized this summer was he had a lot of groups out there. So he had uh, boy scouts, uh, drill scouts would come out. He had uh, some church camps and there was a lot of large groups. And so uh, one, we thought the uh, covered seating area would be great for a programming area. You know, the boy scouts said, hey, we'd love to integrate our trip out here uh, as one of our um, uh, scout badges or what have you. And so if you had a space to do that, it'd be really beneficial. And so what Jeff wanted to do was propose this obviously with the garage, the storage areas for, you know, the equipment and so forth, but the covered uh, event areas really to help with some of the programming as well. Uh, so it'd be an opportunity for some community events, whether it's these, you know, summer camps or like I said, the boy scouts, et cetera. So uh, with the proposal, we, we looked at uh, shifting, like Mary said, shifting the building to the north about five or 10 feet so we can salvage the existing trees there. Uh, but also, you know, it'd kinda fit in with the, the visibility and kinda the view angle in that area. So uh, I think it's pretty straightforward and Mary helped us out. One thing I do want to mention too is when we went through this, Mary uh, was cleaning up some of the old PD documents. And one of the items we're folding into this is to uh, fix the building easement. So right now, I just, the, the way the zoning uh, is written, it defaults to the C uh, zoning category, which requires a 30-foot side yard setback. And you'll see right now on the plan, we're, we're, we're meeting that on the west side with the current and the future garage. But on the east side, the existing building in the front, uh, the live work unit, it's actually about 17 feet from the property line. And so we're cleaning that up uh, to, with this PD to have a 15-foot side yard setback on the east side. So that the main building would be conforming. And you'll see on the site plan, the uh, uh, this, this new structure will fall in, within that same setback. So that was something else we cleaned up on this zoning supplemental. So uh, other than that, uh, we're here to answer any questions y'all have.
Thank you very much. Um, I will, uh, is there anyone who has signed up to speak?
No ma'am.
Okay, thank you. Um, so I will turn it over to council. Council, do you have any questions or comments? Council member Long.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, yeah, just a comment. Um, I went out uh, with Jeff here uh, just before Christmas and toured the uh, the lot and uh, uh, he's continued to do improvements on the lot. You know, we've, we've had him in here on several occasions over the last several years. Uh, and he's really doing a great job and is probably, some of you know, uh, his clientele is worldwide. I mean, he gets, he gets this summer, I was, I was, you know, New Zealand. I mean, just, it's ridiculous that the number of uh, folks that, that he gets out there, much, much larger. And then uh, here several weeks ago, I think it was WRR that was uh, advertising something and he's not a, he's not a sponsor on that program, but they have incorporated uh, trips down the, the generic trips down the Trinity uh, on your kayak as one of the, uh, as one of the amenities uh, in the Dallas area in, in their efforts to try to sell the area. So uh, so they've picked up on that. And so it's really, uh, he's really done a fabulous job, uh, is, um, is um, well-known to us. He's, he's truly a gem, uh, a little hidden gem there on the east side of town. And he's really doing a superb job for us. People know where Capel is, know where the kayaks are.
Where the kayaks are. Uh, council member Roden.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, first, it's great to hear that a local business is doing better, maybe because of the pandemic. Uh, we know that so many businesses are challenged, so that's great to hear. I guess my only question, based on the history of this property, uh, Ms. Boswell, the comment about the height of the western part of the new building and the sightline uh, from the adjacent houses, uh, realizing that you've got the retaining wall and then the fence. Uh, have you looked at those sightlines? Uh, I just don't want us to be back here in a year with, with challenges from those neighbors.
So the, the building, um, the very top of the roof structure, it's 16 feet. Um, but if you notice that the building's oriented east to west, so you know, it's not oriented where it's um, north to south where it would block, you know, that whole, or you know, 100 feet. Um, that building is 25 feet wide and um, I think from, you know, their from where they are in, in their backyard on the residential portion, um, I, I, I don't think that it would, you know, necessarily block their view. Uh, I think the existing building's about 12 or 13 feet in height.
So yeah, it just from looking at the pictures, it looks like their fence and retaining wall is probably 12 to 16 feet high?
Correct.
Okay, and the building peak is 16 feet, you said?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion. Uh, Mayor Pro Tim Hill.
Yes, I'd like to um, close the public hearing and uh, make a motion to approve uh, item number 13 with conditions.
Thank you. Is there a second? Council member Mace? All in favor?
Long, Kena S. Smith, Mace Roden, John Matthew Hill in favor. None opposed, the motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Um, item 14, um, consider approval awarding bid number Q dash 1121 dash O2 Denton Tap Intersection Improvements to Rebcon Inc. for the construction of auxiliary, auxiliary lanes at four intersections of Denton Tap Road in the amount of $2,777,148.70 providing, uh, funding provided by bond proceeds and road impact fees and authorizing the city manager to sign any necessary documents. And we have Mr. Gally here. Welcome. Do you wanna walk us through this item?
Sure, Mayor. Uh, good evening, Mayor and Council. Um, I'm here to present uh, on agenda item number 14, uh, Denton Tap Intersection Improvements uh, at four intersections and uh, answer any questions you might have. Next slide please. Um, in this slide, I'll provide uh, the background and the timeline, how we got here. Um, in 2019, uh, staff uh, looked into opportunities uh, to improve our traffic operations. Um, looked into in, any locations where we, we can increase the capacity. Um, as you know, uh, the city's thoroughfare uh, is built out. Um, and only opportunities we have is increasing the capacity at the major intersections. And that capacity uh, is adding auxiliary lanes. Auxiliary lanes are like adding right only or left only turn lanes uh, at major intersections. Once we found out those opportunities, uh, we presented to the council in a work session. Um, we received the feedback and then uh, council approved um, the design in July of 2019. Uh, once the design was complete, uh, staff advertised for bids um, in October of 2020 and we received uh, three qualified bids. Uh, now we are um, here requesting for approval of this construction. Next slide please. In the next two slides, uh, we'll go through a worldview of the scope of this construction project. On the right side, uh, the map uh, shows the four locations uh, where the improvements, the proposed improvements are. Facing up is the north. Uh, we have improvements on Parkway and Denton Tap. Improvements at Sandy Lake and Denton Tap, Bethel School and Denton Tap, Southwestern and Denton Tap. And on the left side, uh, these are the zoomed-in versions of each location. Um, and I'll go through uh, each one of them. On the top left, we have Parkway and Denton Tap. We are adding um, four um, four additional lanes here. Uh, on the top is, looking up is north. So we are adding a southbound uh, right turn lane, uh, a westbound right turn lane, um, and also a eastbound right turn lane. And we are adding a left turn uh, going west on Parkway. In the second uh, location is Sandy Lake and Denton Tap, uh, we are, here we are adding one right turn only lane uh, going southbound. At Bethel School and Denton Tap, um, we are adding right turn lanes, right turn only lanes and at all, at all directions. And at Southwestern and Denton Tap, uh, we are adding an additional left turn only lane uh, going east on East Bell Line. Addition to, addition to these uh, lanes, we are also adding um, any needed sidewalk uh, and also drainage improvements and signal improvements. Um, the schedule for this project is little over one year. And the contractor is gonna construct one intersection at a time so that to minimize the impact to the residents. Next slide please. The scope uh, also includes um, replacing the vehicle uh, detection equipment at 27 uh, signal at the 27 uh, traffic signal intersections. Here, the map here shows uh, the locations of all of the city's uh, traffic signal intersections. And we have 35 of them. Out of 35, we are replacing 27 locations. Uh, the other locations are replaced by uh, the ongoing projects. Um, the current uh, vehicle detection equipment um, is almost 15 years, 15 years plus uh, old. Um, Copel was the early adopter of that uh, vehicle detection equipment. Um, but lately, uh, the staff has been having problems uh, maintaining the existing equipment because the manufacturer doesn't support uh, the product anymore and we are not able to find the replacement parts. Um, so the scope currently, the current, uh, the, the construction scope also includes a new vehicle detection equipment at 27 intersection. Next slide please. Uh, in this slide, I'll go through uh, the funding sources and uh, brief, briefly about the benefits. Uh, the funding source uh, for this project is from the 2020 bond proceeds. Um, and also supplemented with uh, roadway impact fees. Um, and also a reimbursement grant from Dallas County. Uh, the reimbursement grant is approved. Um, it's $487,000 and that is, staff is gonna apply for it once the construction is complete. And the benefits uh, of this project, I mean, we are adding auxiliary lanes at major intersections. Denton Tap is our major arterial. Um, and adding this auxiliary lanes is gonna improve uh, the operations at these intersections and also provide safety uh, to the motorists. And the outcome of this project uh, is tied into the 2040 uh, foundation. 2040 Vision Foundation, that's Sustainable City Government. Uh, goal one is well-maintained city infrastructure. Uh, goal four is providing excellent service uh, to the residents. Next slide please. Uh, in summary, um, we advertised for bids. Uh, we received three qualified, requalified bids. And Rebcon is the lowest in the qualified bid. Um, and the project, uh, the bid estimate um, was lower than uh, the engineer's estimate. Um, with that, uh, Public Works Department recommends approval of awarding bid number Q dash 1121 dash 02 Denton Tap Intersection Improments to Rebcon INC. in the amount of $2,777,148.70. Next slide please. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you very much for that um, presentation. Um, council, are there any questions or comments? Council member Matthew.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Gally, I have a question. I know this is not part of this four intersection, but during the scope or design study, I believe uh, you talked about having a right turn lane from uh, 121 Service Road to Denton Tap. Uh, is that not part of this? Um, I, obviously it's not part of this, but is that coming up or what is the status of that?
Yes, sir, it is coming up. Uh, we are coordinating, coordinating with Tech Dot. Uh, we are in the process of uh, laying out the design and getting permit from Tech Dot. Uh, staff will be coming back um, for approval for those um, auxiliary lanes.
Thank you. And just to follow up, um, are there any time estimate for that?
Um, we, we are, we are thinking to include as part of this um, contract and so we are, we are, we are working on it. Uh, hopefully next um, three to four months.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? You have a question? Oh, okay. Uh, council member Mace.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Gally, um, you mentioned that you're gonna be replacing the vehicle identification devices at all the intersections. Um, I've had extensive conversations for a long time with Mr. Collins and he claims that's one of the biggest problems we have with our uh, traffic management system. Is there anything else that's being done to take a look at how to improve the traffic flow related to that vehicle identification?
Um, so the, the, the vehicle detection system we are um, purchasing is the most advanced system. Um, it, it, the, the equipment um, has a detection using the radar and also uh, using the video. Um, the current, the current equipment we have is, uses only the video, images for detection. Uh, but whereas the new system has the radar plus the video and using that system, we think that it would be, um, the traffic operations will be improved.
Good, sounds great. Is there any estimated lifetime on the new equipment?
Um, I do not have that answer. Um, but who, the staff will be coming back. Um, so as part of this project, uh, the construction project only includes the installation of the uh, detection equipment. Uh, staff is purchasing um, the, the detection equipment through uh, a co-op purchase for better price. for better pricing, not to have any markups from the contractor. So staff will be coming back for approval on that detection equipment.
Okay, if you could just have that number for me at that time, that'd be great.
Yes, sir, definitely.
Thank you very much.
Councilmember Jen.
Thank you, Mayor. I had a question about the, I guess, the right-turn pocket at the intersections, especially the Southwestern and Denton Tap. I'm just wondering, in terms of going northbound when you're making a right turn to Belt Line, was it, I'm sorry, Dent, yeah, sorry, Southwestern, making a right turn on Southwestern, going up Denton Tap. Have we done enough studies that we don't, we're not doing, making those kind of improvement at this moment? So that, I don't wanna, you know, I don't wanna go back a year or two, two years later and say, whoa, we should've done this also at this time when we're actually doing the intersection improvement?
So staff, back in 2019, we looked into several intersections to improve. And when we were looking at several intersections, we considered the traffic volumes. And based on the traffic volumes, that's how we came up with the required auxiliary lanes. And so during that evaluation, we didn't think that right-turn lane at that location was necessary.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? I'm sorry, I was looking, whoa. Mayor Pro Tim Hill.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yes, I use my hands.
Mr. Gally, looking at the intersection of Parkway and Denton Tap, the northeast corner where that new lane is being put in, how does that interface with the plans for the bike trail extending through there?
So as part of this project, we looked into it a little bit, sir. And we talked with John Elias. And so, and then we kind of like, we do not wanna build a trail as part of this project. We were mostly focused on the intersection improvements. So the expansion of the bike path from Hoods and Parkway to Denton Tap and Parkway, that wasn't included in the scope.
Yeah, I understand that. But you took into account what the master plan was for that bike trail when you're overlaying this new turn lane.
Right. So in the future, when we, if you wanna do the expansion, we would be able to do that. We would have enough space for the expansion of the sidewalk to the bike, to a bike path.
Okay, cuz I seem to remember that there's, you know, the brick screening walls, and I didn't know if it was gonna get too tight in there if you guys did that. But if you've looked at it, then I'm comfortable with it.
We looked into it, and also we received the easement from the HOA.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Is there anyone who would like to make a motion? Councilmember Mace.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve item number 14.
Councilmember Matthew. All in favor?
Ballen, Keenan Smith, Mace Roden, Jen, Matthew Hill in favor. None opposed, the motion carries.
Thank you very much. Okay, now we move. Thank you very much for helping us with that. And thank you, Kent, for being available if necessary. Item 15, City Managers Report, Project Updates and Future Agendas.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and Council, just two things to report this evening. 265 Parkway, the roof replacement should be complete within the next couple of weeks. The decking has been put in place. So, weather permitting, we should have that work completed. And as you drive around town, you'll notice there are still some holiday decorations. You wanted them, you got them. They'll be coming down by the end of this week again, weather permitting. So, Mayor, that's all I have to report this evening.
See, I thought you were just keeping him up to make sure everybody was festive. It is pretty short. Any questions for the city manager? Okay, so item 16, Mayor and Council Reports. If there is anyone out there who is interested in running for city council, you can see how much fun we have. Candidate filing for mayor. City council member places two, four, and six will start tomorrow, January 13, and go through February 12. Applications, forms, and information regarding running for an elected office can be found on the city secretary's election page at capeltx.gov-election. There will be a candidate orientation that will be held on Thursday, January 21, at 6:00 PM at Town Center here at 255 Parkway Boulevard. Social distancing will be observed, all masks, or masks will be worn. And for those who are interested to use the Zoom environment, that also will be, also will be available. If you would like to receive a Zoom link, please RSVP to the city secretary at capeltx, S-I-T-I-S-E-C, that's city sec, short for city secretary, at capeltx.gov. Election Day is May 1, 2021. Wow. City offices will be closed in observation of the Martin Luther King Junior Day on January 18. And the state of the city will be on Thursday, January 21, beginning at 11:30 via Zoom. And that will be through the Chamber of Commerce. So if you'd like to watch, it will be available through the Chamber of Commerce. I and with the help of city staff will review the 2021 vision for the city and give you an idea of what we accomplished during 2020. And I've been told I will take questions from the audience. So it'll be fun. Are there any additional items from council? None? Everybody shaking their heads. Any public service announcements that anyone would like to make? None? There is no necessary action from executive session, and there is no other business before us. So the time is 8:52. And we are adjourned. Oh, that's right. We are not adjourned. We are recessed at 8:52. And we will move to one item on the work session. Sorry, John, I just about missed you. So now we will reconvene into work session at 8:52. And item E, is John available? Yes, he is. Discussion regarding moving forward with the Moore Road Park Elevated Section. Hello, Mr. Elias.
Mayor and Council, thank you for sticking around a little longer so we can talk some trails. I'm here tonight to lead a discussion regarding the possibility of moving forward with the Moore Road Park Elevated Trail Section. I'd like to start the presentation by giving council a brief summary on how we got to this point. In January of 2019, a contract was executed with the City of Capel and Half &amp; Associates to design elevated trail sections for Magnolia Park, Moore Road Park, and at what we refer to as the Asbury Manor Trail Intersection. In July of 2019, Half presented to the city a preliminary findings report that provided detailed alignments for the trails and boardwalks, as well as preliminary costs associated with those. In November of 2019, an updated report was presented to our park board. This report included the Asbury Manor Trail Intersection, both boardwalks again, as well as a north alignment possibility for Magnolia Park. Along about December, we were starting the process of moving forward, meeting with the HOA at Magnolia Park and gathering information to come back to council with. And then all of our projects were put on hold at the start of 2020. They were put on hold while the city evaluated the potential impact of the proposed rule change on how sales tax would be collected. In October of 2020, last fall, we were able to move forward with the Asbury Manor Trail Intersection Repair, and that part of the project has been completed. Currently, the Magnolia Park Trail and the Moore Road Elevated Trails are still on hold. City staff has determined that the funding is available to move forward with the Elevated Trail Section at Moore Road Park. The preliminary estimate to install this trail section is a little over $1 million. It's like $1,030,000. And the funding would be available through the 2014 CRDC Bond Fund. City staff anticipates coming back at a future date to move forward with the Magnolia Park Trail. But we're here tonight to talk specifically about the Moore Road. And I'll refer to it a lot as boardwalk, but it's actually the Elevated Trail Section at Moore Road. Next slide, please. So I wanna make sure everybody knows exactly where I'm talking about when I refer to the Moore Road Boardwalk. And so it is shown here with a red dot. Basically, we're on the eastern portion of the Annie Brown Park system. If you were to go north on Moore Road from Parkway, you're gonna dead-end into Moore Road Park. And on the western side of that, there's a pond. And this red dot indicates the area that I'm talking about. Next slide, please. This is a slide or a photo of the original boardwalk that was installed in 2001. As you can see, it runs along the south perimeter of this smaller lake. This particular boardwalk was built on helical piers. For those that don't know what that is, if you can envision a corkscrew or a drill bit, basically, you just go in and you auger these down into the ground to bedrock. It leaves a rod sticking up, a stilk, for lack of a better term. Those were all drilled going across there. That was what the boardwalk was built on. This boardwalk, the original boardwalk, was designed to rise and fall with water. Basically, on the stilks, you know, the boardwalk would rise up and go back down on those stilks. And so it was designed to stay above water. The problem with the boardwalk was, one, there's far more water coming into the park. So the amount of, that the boardwalk could rise, it exceeded that. Basically, it would rise up all the way off of the helical piers and actually got pushed over and would come back down. It would miss the piers. It did that several times in its lifetime. Park staff would go out there and do whatever we could to get it back down on those stilks and get it opened back up. This happened multiple times over the years. The last time, which was around 2011, it got washed off of its piers again. This time, it did pretty severe damage to the structure of the boardwalk. This particular boardwalk was actually made out of wood. You know, obviously, the helical piers weren't wood, but the actual structure was wood. The decking material was Trex, as was the railing. The damage that was done was so significant that we had to remove it for safety purposes. And so this boardwalk was removed in 2012. Next slide, please. This is a slide indicating the new alignment of the new boardwalk should we move forward with this project. And it's similar, you know, coming from the left side of this slide, that orange part, that is actually gonna be concrete. The blue part would be the elevated structure. As you can see from the alignment here, we're not hugging the shoreline like the previous boardwalk. The previous boardwalk basically followed the shore edge. This one, we're gonna get a little bit more over open water and kind of cut the corner a little bit. There's a couple of reasons for that. One, the maintenance, this area that this boardwalk is being constructed close to, the area there on the south edge of the pond is a natural area. We don't do maintenance in there. It's left alone for a reason. And to be honest, that's the main reason why the community liked the boardwalk, because of the natural area and what you could see there. The challenge that we had with staff was keeping the jungle from overtaking the boardwalk. There's a lot of vines and native stuff that grows there. And so it created quite a bit of maintenance, just keeping the rails and the boardwalk clear of vines and whatnot. And so there was maintenance involved in that, as well as this lake is the last remaining lake that is in the Annie Brown East system, that we have not shored up the pond edge. This particular lake is still in its natural state. And that shoreline moves a little bit. It's been growing out, you know, between erosion and sediment coming into the pond. When we built the original boardwalk, it was over water. By the time we took it out, it was dry. You know, there was land on both sides of it for a good part of it. So we are gonna take this across more open water. We were able to shrink down the actual linear foot of elevated structure here. We were trying to do that because we are wanting to move forward with a better material. Not that Trex is a bad material, but this boardwalk is going to be designed to submerge with the water. It's gonna be anchored. We could not do that with helical piers. Basically, it just, when it's submerged, you know, it would be pulling those piers out or working towards pulling them out. And so we're going with a different approach. We're not gonna be using helical piers. We will be using actual concrete piers. And we're using a much heavier decking material. It's actually concrete, perma-track. If any of council or the mayor's had a chance to walk across the connector trail that we built from the high school over to Annie Brown West, it's a much, obviously, it's a much smaller, you know, section. But it's that material. That's the same type of material we're talking about. Very heavy, it's gonna stay in place. Again, the boardwalk is designed to submerge in high-water events. And then when it goes back down, staff will have to clean it up and we'll get it opened back up. That's a similar occurrence with a good part of our trail system in the Annie Brown system. A lot of it goes underwater. Our staff is ready to go out and barricade if it's underwater and impassable. And then we are, you know, as soon as the water recedes, we go back out and clean it up and get it opened back up. And so we don't anticipate problems with that. Next slide, please. This slide is just a couple of details of how the actual boardwalk would be built. Basically, we're looking at a 10-foot-wide pathway. We will have handrails and guardrails on both sides. This particular one, it may not be the exact one that we would go with, but something very similar to that. This particular one, it may not be the exact one that we would go with, but something very similar to this. Again, the PermaTrak, you know, the decking on it is going to be concrete. It's installed, you know, piece by piece, but it's actually concrete. And we will be using concrete piers to actually build this, you know, that would be the structure for it. So what I'm looking for tonight is just, one, is this, you know, a lot has changed since we awarded the design of this contract in two thousand and nineteen. And so there's really nothing holding this particular section up. We don't anticipate a punch of, you know, needing to meet with HOAs and a lot of community input on it. The boardwalk, it's a replacement. We've had it before. Most of the community was aware of it. Most of the community was very much in love with it. When we took it out, our park board and staff got numerous requests to have it reinstalled. It is kind of a pricey section of trail to do. And so at this point, with funding there to move forward with this section, all I'm asking for is, are we ready to move forward with it? If we are, I'll go ahead and start developing the bid documents, and we'll get down the road with it. Again, we'll be coming back to council to talk about Magnolia Park. Obviously, that one's got a lot more decisions to make, and we have some processes to go through with the HOA and park board as well. This one's a little cleaner. It just comes down to if council's comfortable with moving forward with it, the funding's there, we can go ahead and get started on it. And so with that, the next slide is questions, and I'll be happy to answer any of them.
Thank you. Councilmember Mace.
John, thanks very much. I appreciate you finally clarifying why it was still called a boardwalk. I was not clear on that, so thank you. Question on the handrails. What's the material of that going to be?
We haven't determined it yet. We'll need to put handrails on it. The original estimate included stainless steel, which I don't think we're going to be able to, you know, I don't know that we would want to afford that. As I said, Julian, can you back up a slide to those details? This is just kind of a typical, you know, my guess is it would be some sort of a galvanized material. It's still to be determined. And I can show council that when we come back to award it, or if you're interested. At this point, that's pretty much what it's going to look like. So I don't have a good answer for you what exactly it would be. We haven't determined that yet.
Just not the bare rusted steel that I'm not.
The previous one, the previous boardwalk, that was kind of rough. That was borderline heavy gauge hog wire that was used on that. We would not be doing something like that. We had a lot of problems with that. We don't want kids to be able to use it to climb, you know, as a step, as a foothold to be able to get up over the rail. And so it would be very similar to this, smaller squares. Either a powder coated material or a galvanized material would be my guess at this point.
All right. Sounds good. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Is this is still high on the park board's list of items to get accomplished, correct?
That is correct. This was a high priority from back in two thousand and seventeen and eighteen. Once we awarded the contract to go ahead and start designing it, it comes off of our priority list at that point because it is actually being done. And so the last time it was on the priority list, it was on the list as a high priority. It is not currently on the list again because by the list, we're already started on it. And so the priority list is for future projects.
Councilmember Jen.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm not sure if I have the timeline right, but was this part of the major renovation when we had the Annie Brown East?
It was not. These were separate projects. We looked at it when we were trying to do the renovation. You know, this is a pricey section of trail. And so it did not make the cut for what we wanted to get accomplished with the redesign, with, you know, having to do Annie Brown West and Annie Brown East. We did not go that far east with the project. Basically, we stopped at what used to be the old softball fields in the fourplex. We did not go past that lake with the redevelopment project. So no, it was not part of that project. It was considered. We just simply didn't have enough money to do that. It would have been in the next phase of the Annie Brown redevelopment. But when we started, you know, looking at moving forward with elevated structures, our thought was, we'll hire one engineer, we'll design all three, and potentially run them all as one project. They're fairly close in proximity to each other. And so that was the intent from the start. Asbury Manor ended up not being able to go with, you know, the elevated structures. The HOA over there was, you know, it wasn't meeting some of their criteria as far as what they wanted done, you know, on their property. So we ended up just doing ground level there. It's still kind of, it's still to be determined what we're going to do at Magnolia Park, whether we do elevated or go around on the north side. So that's kind of why we're here. There's really no reason to wait unless it's just, you know, if we do go with boardwalks at Magnolia Park, it could be a bid at once and done as one. But we weren't sure of the direction there. And so that's how we landed here, and that's a long answer, and I apologize for that. Originally, no, it's not part of the Annie Brown redevelopment project.
And but we knew about the issues it had at the time when we had the Annie Brown renovation.
Sure. I mean, we removed the boardwalk in two thousand and twelve. So yeah, we knew that it was a high priority. It would have been in a future phase of the redevelopment. There were, you know, there were several phases of that development. And we only did the first one. It certainly would have been a part of the second phase. We just weren't sure when that phase would get there. So being that it was a high priority with park board, we went ahead and put a project together to try to, again, to link up several elevated structures and get moving on them all at the same time.
Thank you.
Bijou.
Thank you, Mayor. John, thank you for your presentation. I know you mentioned that you are bringing back the Magnolia Park soon. I just want to hear the reasoning. The West Haven people want to have a connector to Magnolia Park. And I know from the estimate that you mentioned it's four hundred thousand to six hundred thousand, right, in range, connecting that trail? Why are we choosing this over that when there is no connector exists today?
John, let me take that. The project, as he's alluded to, in two thousand and twelve when it was taken out, was a community-wide effort to get the boardwalk built. So the community, when we went through the Andy Brown public hearings and we went through all that process, this boardwalk was the highest priority to get done, right? So it didn't have, West Haven didn't really exist until more recent. The boardwalk itself, from a funding standpoint, we have the funding in place for this extension. The council is going to have to make a choice on which direction they want to go regarding the connection of Magnolia Park Trail. As part of that process, the HOAs will have to be involved because they've been involved in the past. They've actually made appeals to the council not to do it on the north side, right? So until the council makes that particular decision, which we're going to be talking about in the next several months, and decides which direction they're going into, that will continue to delay, if you will, the choice of Magnolia Park Trail. We have an opportunity now. We started a process in two thousand and nineteen or so. So this has been something that the council has said we want to do. So the idea now is you have funding in place. We have the contract for the design in place. We're bringing it to you to determine whether or not you want us to go forward or not. So John can't answer the question. Council can answer the question.
Mark.
You know, given the current financial climate and the potential, the upcoming change to the rules for sales tax, I think it would behoove us to wait until after this legislative session to see what becomes of that ruling before we move forward with spending a million dollars. Because I can see that there could be other situations like the repairs we had to do at Asbury Manor Trail Intersection that will come up. And I think it's money that we just need to hold on to, you know, for several months until we see what happens.
Mayor, just to be clear, Councilman Hill, the funding of this is out of the two thousand and fourteen bond project. This is not using CRDC funds. This is money that's, the debt's already been issued for trails. So the funds for this are already in place via the debt, so it's not reliant on the CRDC or any other sales tax. Does that help clarify that?
It does. So the money cannot be used for repairing trails like we did at Asbury Manor.
I don't believe that we've, that we used the bond money for Asbury Manor. I believe we used part of the cash on hand from the CRDC.
From CRDC?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And this is technically, I mean, we're replacing a trail, but it's technically a new trail because there is not one there right now. And as someone who was on council, I might have just got, was I just mayor? Oh, my gosh, I was just mayor. And when that boardwalk went down, I, you know how we get traffic calls? That boardwalk was more more intense. I mean, just think of all the people that use that park and all of a sudden, you know, that section is gone. And it was, honest to God, it was their favorite section. And so, and that is, it's very, still very vivid in my mind. And the people who are major trail people, this is, this is, this is an important amenity that they want back. Since, in my head, since we have the bond funds available, this is something that we can actually do and get started right now. And I would like to see us move forward. And I'm sure it's going to take a while to get actually accomplished, but it would be great to see it get started again. Brianna.
Thank you, Mayor Karen. Yeah, so John, what would be, or Mr. Elias, what would be the timeline to get this completed?
You know, we haven't, we haven't put together any bid documents yet. All we did, you know, was preliminary stuff. We've done all the geotech, all the survey, a lot of the background stuff needed for the design. I haven't got a true timeline from Half yet. I'm going to guess, you know, it's going to take us a couple of months, if not three, to get the bid, you know, the bid documents. We've got to run those by our engineering, do plan reviews, whatnot. Then we'll have to bid it out, you know, and then I'll have to come back to council to get it awarded. So I would say if you, if council gives me the direction to move tonight, we'll immediately start on the design. I'm going to say that's going to take at least sixty days to get that design done, if not ninety. The actual engineering part of the boardwalk is actually done by PermaTrak, you know. They, it's kind of like if you buy a bridge, you know, they'll engineer the bridge for you. All we will be engineering would be the abutments at both ends and the actual concrete trail. So there's not a whole lot of design on Half's side, but there is on PermaTrak's side. So, you know, without having real numbers, Brianna, I would say we're looking at least ninety days for the design and then the bid process and then coming back through council. So, you know, we're looking at a summer, a summer construction time, which is a good time to be working on the lakes. As a person that's done a lot of work on lakes in that area, they tend to go underwater and cause problems for construction. And so a summertime construction would probably be good anyway. So I know that's kind of a long-winded answer, you know, probably at least six months before we're out there building it.
No, that's fine. And then I think I'll echo the mayor's comments that I remember when this went down as well. And you're right, there were so many people, and there still is. And even when I walked the trail, which I try to go every day out to the park, there's, you know, always people that, you know, it's like they're making comments about it or asking about it or, I mean, this has just always been a high priority. And I just, I think we need to do it. The funding is there. And, you know, we've, it's been part also of our living well in Capel, encouraging people to walk, people use our trails. And even now with the pandemic, like, I mean, that park is always full. And just to be able to complete this, I think, would be huge for our community. So.
John?
Yeah, following up on Councilmember Hill, what is the downside if we waited until the situation's a little bit, I mean, if we have a little more information about the tax situation?
It's not the same issue. The debt has already been, the debt, sorry, the money for trails has already been issued.
It's in the bank.
Right. It's an allocation. And so it's going to be spent on trails. That's what the money's there, is sitting there. So it is independent of the sales tax situation.
Okay.
Does that, does that help?
That does help, but what is the downside if we waited?
The only thing I could tell you is potential cost increases. Yeah, you know, in terms of you have the funds available. It's something that we started on in two thousand and nineteen with council. It's something that the council and the parks board has set as a priority. The other side of the question is why wait? If you have the funds in place. I mean, I'm not asking that rhetorically. I'm just saying, if the council chooses to wait, that's the council choosing to wait. That's the direction that you give staff to do. And we're, that's why we're here. We're here to get the direction from the council.
Gary then, Mark. He heard me, you didn't. Sorry.
You know, I agree with Councilmember Hill that we need to be very conservative and cautious till we get through this legislative session with anything and until we can determine what our budget's going to look like. However, in this case, this is not a scenario that if we don't spend this money, we can use it to help fix a budget problem next year. It's got to be spent on trails. I think it's a reasonable question of what's wrong with waiting without the historical perspective of, there's a lot of people that were really upset that we haven't fixed this thing for eight years. I understand the need to do the Magnolia deal, Councilmember Matthew. But reality, that's only been the last couple of years. This has been, people have been waiting for eight or nine years for this. So I think our citizens would not be happy if the money was there, the staff's ready to move forward, and we didn't do it. Waiting to see if something that was not going to impact this happened is the only reason I would give for, for why would we not wait? Folks were not happy that we didn't fix it in two thousand and twelve or thirteen. This is probably one of those, one of those issues that I've probably got more comments on than just about anything else. There's a few others out there, but, so I guess the question is why not proceed? The money's there, and we can't use it for anything else, so.
Mark.
Yeah, so why was this put on hold in the first place? I was reading the memo, and it says it was put on hold because of I was reading the memo, and it says it was put on hold because of the impact of the proposed rule change.
We put, yeah, we put a hold on all capital expenditures.
But why? If the money was there, why did, why did we do that? I don't even.
Well, because from an instruction standpoint, that's what I instructed staff to do. I wanted us to put a hold on all capital expenditures so that we could ferret our way through the process. So I take responsibility for that. That was my choice. I made that recommendation to the council, and the council accepted doing that. Did I at the time disclose that there was bond money available for this project? That was not something that I talked about. I didn't purposely hide it. I just said, we put all capital expenditures on hold. That was, that was the reason.
It's probably a good thing because I think the market has changed significantly.
Well, as an example, the street projects that were bid today, you know, because of the construction costs have gone down, except for lumber, as you well know.
Yeah. Let's not build this out of wood.
Yes.
So yeah, so it, you know, in hindsight, it did make sense because we're going to save a ton of money and get more bang for our buck.
John?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to clarify, when you say the money's there, are we talking about that money's just there specifically for this boardwalk? Or is it there for trail in entirety?
The bond proceeds that were issued in 2014 included several items. One of those items listed was trails. There was not a specific listing of trails. So it's, the terminology is generic per your question.
Okay. So which means that the money could be spent on repairs or other things other than this boardwalk, correct?
The money can be spent on trails. I can't answer the question as far as repairs or not because we have a funding source for repairs.
Okay.
Okay, so let's give them some direction. You want to move forward?
One of the things that's gone unsaid is every economic analysis I'm seeing for 2021 and 22 now is showing a huge uptick in the construction building. Home sales are supposed to just skyrocket this year, and that's going to lead into the, to that one and a half percent increase that we saw back when in 2016, 2017 per month. And I'd really like to get this one going before that. So I'm all in favor of moving forward.
Am I seeing yeses? Yes, yes?
Yes.
Four, five? Okay. So let's move forward. Go ahead.
My commitment to you is that staff is preparing to come before you. I believe we'll be talking about it at the council retreat, the Magnolia Trail options, so that we can get the kind of direction like we got tonight. And we'll also be able to describe to you a much better financial picture for the, all the funds, because we're going to be talking about the budget. So as a wrap up to this, my commitment to you is that at the retreat, we will talk about Magnolia Trail, the direction. Y'all still may not be prepared to give us direction, but you'll be able to have more information because we'll have more information, okay?
Thank you, Mr. John. Appreciate you. Now, we will adjourn from work session and go back into regular session at 9:27, which is why we did this afterwards. And there is no other business before this group, so can I adjourn now? I can't adjourn now? Okay. So we are adjourned at 9:27. Thank you, everyone.